Well, good afternoon, everybody. Happy New Year. Welcome back. Um, we're gonna get right to work tonight and um, this administrative informal and workshop session of this meeting of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, is hereby convened at four o'clock on this fourteenth day of January twenty twenty five. At this time, I will ask Madam Clerk to please announce the rule.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in the School Board chamber are Chair Melnick, Mr. Bowen Steele, Ms. Brown, Mr. Callan, Ms. Dyer, Ms. Felton, Dr. Green, Ms. Rogers, and Ms. Weems. And present online is Mr. Cummings. And Mr. Cummings, for the record, can you please state the reason why you are zooming into the meeting?
Oh, sorry. I'm zooming in because of family uh medical issues.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Okay. Do we know anything about Mr. Culpepper? Okay. Um, okay. All right. Um, School Board Administrative Matters and Reports. Does anybody have anything to report this evening? Yes?
Uh, just a uh a comment to the board that um, early in the year, there were no changes to school board assignments for schools because we recognized that there was an election coming up, an election has occurred. And so uh, we've got a number of schools that were assigned to members who no longer exist. And so we'll need the board direction on how do you wanna divvy up the schools? Do you wanna uh recirculate the entire list in a future meeting? Um, because in addressing principals today, I told them to be expecting um, direction soon in terms of who their new school board member assignments would be. So I'll leave that to you um, to let me know how you want to divvy up the schools, whether it's a replacement by seat. Like if you took Ms. Riggs's seat, you get Ms. Riggs's schools, or do you wanna do a whole new thing and do picks? So I just wanna have that on your radar.
Okay. And to that, um, tonight, uh, we elect a new chair and vice chair, and with that comes um, the new committee assignments. And we are getting a late start um, this year. It's already the fourteenth of January. Um, I know I'm on some committees that meet soon. Um, and you know, those that we are, that are on committees now, we can keep those for now. But technically, i- if we proceed with the same process, we're not gonna have committee assignments till the first meeting in February, which is gonna leave a lot of um, committee work un- unmanageable. So we need to also discuss at some point this evening how we're gonna proceed quickly to make sure that um, our committees are covered. Okay, so I'll leave you guys with that, and perhaps by the end of the formal meeting, um, we can give staff some direction and um, the chair and vice chair can start straight away on the committee assignments. Okay, um, also, um, we have meetings with the superintendent. There are some um, openings here, and there's also an opening for the seventeenth and two on the thirty-first um, for school visits with the superintendent. And so um, I will start this way, and we'll get that going. All right, anything else? All right, then, um, first, we welcome Crystal Page, Chief Financial Officer, with our Budget Process Overview. Welcome, Ms. Page.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairwoman Melnick, School Board Members, and Dr. Robertson. I haven't done this in a while. It seems like I'm really loud. Um, in this presentation, we will provide a high-level overview of the budget process in Virginia Beach City Public Schools as well as at the state level. Toward the end, I will share an update with you on the Governor's Proposed Budget released on December eighteenth. Our agenda for the presentation includes the following key points: Comparing a household budget to a school division budget to build a foundation in budgeting concepts; Reviewing the budget calendar for Virginia Beach City Public Schools; Exploring school funding sources; Discussing the internal budget process specific to the school division; Examining the state's budget calendar and process; And providing a summary of how questions from school board members are addressed. Let's begin with our first topic, a comparison between a household budget and a school division budget. This slide compares the components of a household budget with those of a school division budget. On the left, a household budget typically includes income from sources such as salaries and wages, bonuses and commissions, social security, disability payments, or income from dividends, interest, rental properties, or capital gains. Expenses cover essentials like housing, food, and utilities, as well as savings for emergencies and investments for the future. Additionally, discretionary spending may include expenses from like dining out, vacations, purchasing a new vehicle, or making home improvements. On the right side, a school division budget features comparable categories: Revenue is sourced from federal, state, and local funding as well as grants. Expenditures include costs for employee compensation, benefits, instructional programs, maintenance, facilities, and reserves representing investments in the future. Discretionary spending may include items like employee compensation, reductions in healthcare premiums, or the introduction of new program initiatives. Additional similarities include the consistent budgeting principles shared by households and school divisions. Both focus on allocating resources effectively, balancing income with expenses, and prioritizing essential needs. Neither should spend beyond their means or exhaust their entire budget by year end. Both should maintain savings for emergencies or unexpected situations. Both should focus all on investing in their future, emphasizing the importance of starting early if possible and maintaining consistency in their investments. There are also key differences to highlight. First, scale of impact. Household budgets affect immediate family members, whereas school division budgets affect students within the city and the broader community. Households typically manage straightforward income sources such as salaries, while school divisions rely on multiple funding streams such as federal, state, local funding, and grants. These streams are more diverse and regulated alongside a broader range of expenditures. A household budget might allocate approximately thirty percent to housing, twenty percent to food, fifteen percent to transportation, ten percent to savings, and twenty-five percent to miscellaneous. In contrast, school division budgets are dominated by staffing costs, often accounting for sixty to seventy percent of expenditures, reflecting the labor-intensive nature of education. For Virginia Beach City Public Schools, staffing comprises around eighty-five percent of our operating budget. School division budgets involve input from a broader range of stakeholders, including school board members and community feedback, adding layers of collaboration and decision-making. So budgeting, whether for a household or a school division, revolves around balancing needs with available resources. I hope this provides a straightforward overview of how to approach the budget development process. I will now transition to provide information on more specific areas that will be referenced as the budget development process progresses. This slide outlines the Virginia Beach City Public Schools' budget calendar, which was approved by the School Board earlier in the fiscal year. The highlighted section indicates our current position in the timeline. At this stage, the budget staff, along with the superintendent, are reviewing, refining, and summarizing requests outside the base budget. Toward the end of January, the proposed School Operating Budget and Capital Improvement Program budget will be finalized for the superintendent's review. On February eleventh, we will present the superintendent's estimate of needs, known as the SEON, and the Capital Improvement Program budget to the School Board. Keep in mind, state revenue presented on February eleventh in the superintendent's estimate of needs could be based on the Governor's Proposed Budget. While the General Assembly's crossover date is February fourth, we do not expect to have further updates on state funding until later in February. This uncertainty means the budget presented in the SEON may change as we receive final information from the state. The final state budget is anticipated to be available by late February. This slide illustrates the school division's revenue sources and compares the final amended fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget to the Governor's Proposed Budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six. As shown, we anticipate an overall revenue increase of approximately thirty point one million dollars, with the majority of the increase coming from the city through the revenue-sharing formula. It is also worth noting that projected increases from our amended fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget in state revenue is approximately four point three million dollars, and for state sales tax is showing an increase of five point four million dollars, for a total of nine point seven million dollars from the state. Now we will move into the internal budget process specific to the school division during the budget development process. Personnel budget accounts for the salaries, fringe benefits, and compensation increase for our FTE positions. Budget managers are provided a list of employees funded in their respective budgets to review and verify. The personnel budget is created using data extracted from the Position Management System at a specific point in time. For the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six budget, the data was captured on November first. The file includes all FTE positions, FTE vacancies as of that date, as well as allowances and benefits, including the employer's share of FICA, the Virginia Retirement System, life insurance, and retiree health insurance credit. Budget staff works hand-in-hand with the Consolidated Benefits Office to determine the most accurate employer contribution for employee health insurance. And VRS rates for retirement and life insurance are established by the VRS Board and provided to the school division. As we approach February eleventh, we will be seeking direction from the Board regarding staff compensation. Human Resources works with our external consultant, Segal, to calculate the cost of various scenarios. Internally, we will narrow down the scenarios and present only a few to be shared with the Board during the compensation presentation later this month. After extracting the data, the budget staff reconciles the current personnel data to the prior year's adopted budget. Following the adoption of the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five budget, various personnel changes occur throughout the year based on assessed needs, reclassifications, and reallocations. The budget staff updates the prior year's adopted budget numbers to reflect all these changes, providing a clearer picture of the current state. Once the reconciliation is complete, this becomes a starting point for developing the superintendent's estimate of needs. The SEON includes personnel requests received from departments, FTE adjustments based on enrollment changes, adjustments to fringe benefit costs, and the proposed salary increases for employees. The SEON becomes the starting point for the development of the proposed budget. As the state legislator moves, legislature moves through their process and adjustments are made, budget staff will update the SEON to reflect what the School Board approves, including staff salaries and adjustments to fringe benefits and FTEs if needed. The allocation of instructional personnel in Virginia Beach adheres to guidelines that meet or exceed the Standards of Quality, or SOQ, Virginia's accreditation requirements, and the core class size caps adopted by the School Board. The number of classroom teachers and various other positions at each school is determined by specific staffing formulas for each program level. For example, the number of classroom teachers assigned to an elementary school is based on a pupil-teacher ratio, which depends on the number of students. At the secondary level, class size is influenced by both the number of students and class schedules. The complete Virginia Beach City Public Schools staffing standards and guidelines are included in the appendix of the superintendent's estimate of needs. In the area of non-FTE personnel and other expenditures, chief officers and their department heads evaluate all expenditures to determine which are essential, that enhance productivity and efficiency, or are mandated, and which are beneficial but not critical. Based funding dollars within a cost center can be reallocated to meet an anticipated funding need. As we progress further into the development of the SEON and scenarios, the Board will see evidence of resources that may be considered for removal based on available funding. Our goal is to ensure we retain resources that deliver the best return on investment. For newly identified budget items arising from student or staff needs, new legislation, or shifting priorities, chief officers and department heads are required to complete a budget request form. These forms are intended for requests outside the base budget and should detail how that request aligns with the strategic plan, along with financial justification. The budget staff then compiles these requests into a spreadsheet, reviews them, adds notes, and forwards the information to the superintendent and chief of staff for further review and decision onto whether to include the new item. The next section addresses state budget calendar and process. The budget process in Virginia involves several stages, as you can see on this slide. Virginia follows a biennial budget process, meaning the state's budget covers a two-year period and is subsequently amended annually. So we are developing a budget in the second year of the twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-six biennium. The process begins each December when the Governor induces a budget proposal to the Virginia General Assembly. This usually occurs in odd number of years, and the budget covers the upcoming two fiscal years. The proposal outlines the Governor's priorities, funding recommendations, and policy initiatives. Annually, there are mid-biennium amendments to the current two-year budget to address changes in the economic conditions, revenue projections, or emerging priorities. This can involve legislative action or executive orders depending on the circumstances. Once the Governor submits the budget, the General Assembly Finance Committees, along with other relevant committees, review the proposal in detail. They analyze the proposed allocations, consider the economic outlook, and gather input from various agencies and stakeholders. The committees hold hearings to gather input from state agencies, local governments, advocacy groups, and the public, allowing for a comprehensive review of budgetary needs and priorities. Based on the feedback received during the review process, the House and Senate each propose amendments to the Governor's Proposed Budget. This involves adjustments to funding levels, reallocation of resources, and changes to specific provisions within the budget proposal. The House and Senate must approve the budget. Discrepancies between the two versions passed by each chamber are reconciled through a conference committee, where the House and Senate appoint conferees who negotiate a deal and present a conference report that the House and Senate then approve. Once the General Assembly approves the final budget, it is sent to the Governor for approval. The Governor has the authority to sign the budget into law, veto specific line items, or propose amendments, which the legislator, legislature then votes up or down. This slide outlines the key dates in the state budget process. These dates are tentative and subject to change. In twenty twenty-five, the General Assembly convened on January eighth. They did have a slight delay due to the issues of water enrichment, but they are back on track. Budget amendments from all legislative members were due on January tenth. On February second, the House Appropriations Committee and the Senate Finance Committee will report out their approved amendments to the Governor's Budget. The crossover, where the budget proposals from the House and Senate switch sides, is scheduled for February fourth. The House and Senate are scheduled to release their final conference report on the budget sometime between February seventeenth through the nineteenth. The General Assembly is to adjourn on February twenty-second. If there is an agreement during the regular session and everything proceeds on schedule, the goal is to deliver a state budget when the General Assembly adjourns sin die in February, meaning there is no appointed date for resumption. If there is no agreement and the Governor proposes amendments, the General Assembly will be reconvened in session if needed, with this scheduled for April second or ninth. A primary component of Virginia's K through twelve education budget is the Standards of Quality Funding Formula. The Constitution of Virginia requires the Virginia Board of Education to prescribe standards of quality for the public schools of Virginia. These standards are known as the Standards of Quality, or SOQ, and set out a minimum requirements for providing a quality public education that must be met by all Virginia public schools and school divisions. The SOQ covers various aspects of education, including staffing levels, class sizes, and instructional resources. Most funding is dispersed through programs and funding streams that are part of the SOQ. Additional state funding comes from programs funded by the lottery or other funding streams, including incentive and categorical programs. Some incentive and lottery programs require local matches, which impact the operating budget. A key topic of interest is the report issued in July twenty twenty-three by the Joint Legislative Audit and Review Commission, known as JLRK. JLRK provided a blueprint for how policymakers could improve the school funding formula to ensure that the state pays its fair share. The report highlighted significant disparities in funding for Virginia's school divisions compared to several benchmarks, including the fifty-state average, the regional average, and three of Virginia's five bordering states. The report noted that Virginia's school divisions receive substantially less funding per K through twelve student when compared to other states. This underfunding is a critical issue as it has far-reaching implications for the quality of education that students receive. A significant factor contributing to the underfunding is the inadequacies of the SOQ formula. The SOQ formula substantially underestimates the staffing requirements necessary to ensure a high-quality education for students as it fails to account for the workforce needed to meet educational standards accurately. Furthermore, the formula underestimates salaries and related compensation costs for most SOQ-recognized positions. Compounding these issues, the SOQ formula does not adequately account for students with high needs, including at-risk students, those in special education, and English-language learners. The state's funding allocations for these specific student populations fall significantly short of the funding lab levels established as necessary by comprehensive cost studies conducted in other states. The deficient, this deficiency threatens the ability of Virginia's schools to provide the essential resources and support required to ensure an equitable and inclusive education for all students. On October thirty-first, Virginia lawmakers discussed ways to address the decades-old funding formula and considered a series of near-term recommendations from JLRK that could be phased into the state's plans within three to four years. These include lifting the support cap, which limits the number of support positions the state would fund, addressing technical issues with the funding formula, and using division, division averages instead of approximating what most school divisions spend on operating their schools in the state's calculations. They also recommended that this local composite index should be changed to a three-year average instead of every two, and suggested changing the at-risk funding formula that would impact, impact low-income or students identified as at-risk and studying special education staffing needs. Long-term recommendations, such as shifting to a student-weighted funding model, developing new staffing ratios, updating salary assumptions during re-benchmarking, and replacing the cost of competing adjustments with more accurate adjustments based on a Virginia Cost of Labor Index that better accounts for differing labor costs across school divisions and calculating compensation funding will require additional time to review and implement. So we just mentioned the local composite index, which determines state and local shares of funding for K through twelve education. Localities with a higher LCI receive less state funding than those with a lower index, resulting in additional funding being placed on the locality. For fiscal year twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-six, LCI for Virginia Beach City Public Schools is point four one three eight, meaning the city of Virginia Beach is required to pay about forty-one point four percent of the cost of the minimum education program set out by the state SOQ. Note that Virginia Beach does contribute more funding than required by the state. As shown in this graph, our composite index has been fairly stable over the last five to seven years, and with a small increase from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five. As the new federal administration gears up, contractors, grant recipients, and others doing business with the federal government brace for potential impacts on federal appropriations, include those, including those related to some of our largest grant programs: Title I, Title II, Title IV, and IDEA. This slide lists these grants and the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five award amounts. You can see the FTEs these funds currently support for Virginia Beach City Public Schools and the potential impact of reducing or eliminating the funding of any of these programs. There is a lot of detail behind the scenes of how these federal grant programs operate. Two of the largest grant programs are Title I Part A at approximately seventeen point seven million dollars, well-known in supporting low-income students, and Part B of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, or IDEA, at approximately sixteen point nine million, I'm sorry, sixteen point four million, um, for special education services. Title II Part A is smaller at approximately two million and supports resources such as math and literacy coaches to implement coaching supports to increase teacher and administrator capacity. Title IV Part A is also a small grant in comparison at approximately one point three million and supports FTE positions such as high-school graduation coaches, secondary literacy, literacy teachers, and math coaches at targeted secondary sites. If federal education funding went directly to states under the new administration without accountability measures, state leaders would have more flexibility to make fiscal decisions, but that would result in vastly different K through twelve experiences for students depending on where they live. A major driver in the budget process is student enrollment. For the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, it is projected that we will have a little over sixty-four thousand students, including early childhood special education, pre-K, and CSAP. While enrollment has declined over the last five years and is expected to continue, it is important to note that student needs are anticipated to have an increasing impact on the budget. We have seen and continue to see increases in economically disadvantaged students, English-language learners, and students with disabilities who experienced learning loss from the pandemic, and those with increased social-emotional needs. I will now provide a brief overview of the Governor's Proposed Biennial Budget and some implications. This slide, apologies, difficult to read. Um, it highlights some of the Governor's key budget policy decisions alongside the projected allocations for Virginia Beach City Public Schools as outlined by the Virginia Department of Education's Planning and Calculating Tool. The tool reflects the impact of the Governor's Proposed Amendments for each division. The goal is to share the narrative that the Governor's Budget includes funding that doesn't, does not always translate into direct aid for K through twelve school divisions in Virginia, and to understand the distinction between the proposals and the actual funding received by the divisions. Highlights of the Governor's December budget announcement for Virginia Education Sector include, and they're shown on the left side, uh, five hundred and seventeen million increase in direct aid, two hundred and ninety million for school construction, six point eight million for school safety, including school resource officers and school security officers, three hundred and eighty million for targeted English-language learners, at-risk population, and special ed, a hundred and ten million increase in support of English-language learners, twenty-five million for new lab school partnerships with historically black colleges and universities, thirty-five million increase to fund high-school dual enrollment and career and technical education, fifty-one point three million for school performance and support framework resource hub, five million to support Virginia's visualization and analytics solution known as V-Voss, eight million for the childcare subsidy program, and fifty million to establish the Virginia Opportunity Scholarship Program. While this list highlights several notable items, this list is not exhaustive. Even though English-language learners, school construction, and lab school partnerships were announced as separate items and are listed as such, they are subset of the five hundred and seventeen million direct aid allocation. Similarly, sixty-six million for a new assessment system isn't detailed here, but contributes to the projected one point five billion dollars of budget proposals announced from the Governor of Virginia's K through twelve education, which potentially could be distributed among a hundred and which potentially could be distributed among a hundred and thirty-four school divisions in the Commonwealth. Based on the planning calculation tool, Virginia Beach City Public Schools, despite being the fourth-largest school division in the Commonwealth, is projected to receive just under ten million dollars in additional funds. This demonstrates that the governor takes an equity lens in distribution of funds, which we understand and concur. It is difficult to crosswalk the governor's allotments to what we receive as a school division line by line as we do rely on the Virginia Department of Education's expertise in analyzing the overall state budget and making these allocations. As mentioned, many of the governor's proposed budget items do not directly fund school divisions, but instead allocate resources to Virginia Department of Education's Central Office Budget, other state agencies, or students and families. For example, funding of twenty-five million for lab schools goes to the College Partnership Laboratory School Fund. Dual enrollment and CTE funding of thirty-five million goes to the College and Career Ready Virginia Fund. Funding of five million for the new assessment system known as V-Vos and the fifty-one point three million for the School Performance and Support Framework Resource Hub goes to the Virginia Department of Education's Central Office Budget. Virginia Opportunity Scholarships, funding of fifty million dollars will be used to establish the Virginia Opportunity Scholarship Program to provide grants to eligible students. The childcare subsidy, funding of eight million, goes to the Childcare Subsidy Program where the funds are transferred to the Department of Social Services. There is three hundred and eighty million for the at-risk English language learners in special education, mainly for divisions that have underperformed in these areas. Virginia Beach has a strong school and student performance on state SOL assessments and therefore is not in the, in this category, so we received minimal amounts for these areas. There was a minor one point six million dollar increase for English language learners. A minor increase in the at-risk category amounting to a net of approximately nine thousand dollars over our fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget. For SOQ funding for special education and the special ed regional tuition, there's a decrease of six hundred, of over six hundred and twenty-five thousand in that category. All three of these student populations have consistently grown and their increasing needs place additional pressure on the operating budget as we work to provide continued support and services. The two hundred and ninety million in school construction funding is expected to be distributed as grants and/or distributed based on needs. Virginia Beach City Public School is likely, unlikely to benefit from this funding when compared to other divisions in the Commonwealth. Similarly, the six point eight million for school safety prioritizes divisions lacking school resource officers and school security officers at the secondary level, roles that Virginia Beach City Public Schools already funds through its operating budget. We previously discussed the local composite index of the LCI, highlighting that a higher LCI results in receiving less state funding. Nearly all Standards of Quality Program formulas incorporate the composite index. This is also true for certain programs under the incentive funding category. Additionally, approximately five programs in the lottery funding category also use the composite index in their calculations. The key takeaway here is that our LCI increases as it has for the twenty-four, twenty-six biennium state funding decreases. A notable example of this impact is basic aid. The governor's proposed budget reflects an increased sales tax projection. Since basic aid and sales tax are inversely related, for every dollar increase in sales tax, basic aid funding decreases by approximately sixty cents as determined by our composite index. So in summary, the funding outlined in the governor's budget offered minimal, if any, increases to critical funding for Virginia Beach. The governor's budget, while equity-focused, disadvantages high-performing divisions such as Virginia Beach City Public Schools. allocations prioritize specific demographics but fail to reflect growing demands in divisions like ours, which continue to outperform academically despite limited increases in financial support. The proposed budget is a mixed bag, ambitious in scope, yet fails to deliver equitable outcomes. We believe and hope that there will be some potential change, changes coming out of the General Assembly Legislative Session that will provide us with additional funding for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. We recognize that during the budget development process, board members will have questions as they digest all the information provided to them in a relatively short period of time. We ask that all questions be submitted via email to the superintendent and chief financial officer. Please copy all school board members on your email. Responses to questions will be presented back to all school board members in the following scheduled school board meeting. Thank you for your time, and I will open it up for questions.
So, I see no questions yet, but I do want to say it is this first presentation of the budget process. God love you, I can hear you, Mr. Callender in my ear. And he talked about the fire hose. Mr. Cole Pupper and I were like, remember the first time you heard this information? So to new board members, please, this is a lot of information. It's like getting hit in the face with the frying pan. There are a lot of acronyms, there are a lot of, I mean, this is what Crystal does for a living, and so it, it rolls right off of her tongue. Um, but if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to call another board member. Don't be afraid to put all of your questions in emails, um, copy the whole board so we all know what you're asking and what you're thinking and, um, don't, just don't be afraid to ask questions. This is a lot of information. The one slide, I think it was slide fifteen, you don't have to go back to it. But for my colleagues, this is a great reference right here of the state's schedule. Um, and then for us here, um, on the board, we'll be meeting every Tuesday in February. And so, um, that is, that's a great time to really, um, really learn a lot. And with that, Ms. Brown.
Thank you. Um, and I'm gonna ask you to pull up slide twelve and, specifically because I want to point it out, um, for newer board members when we were talking about the SOQs, and I did have a question too. Um, last year during the budget cycle, we received information on the number required to meet SOQ for certain positions and where we exceed those numbers, and I did find that information very valuable. Is that something that we would be able to get again this year?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and so this is in the back of our, our budget book when we get it, but, um, superintendent's estimate needs. But, um, this right here is how we come up with our staff positions, so that, that was it. Thank you.
Ms. Weems.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Pate, with the, um, slide about the students with disabilities being almost fourteen percent, I'm assuming that's consistent with other divisions statewide and actually nationally. Am I correct with that assumption? It keeps getting higher and higher, and this is the highest it's ever been, I think, since I've been on the board.
I mean, I can't really speak to other divisions. Um, I think what I hear is that, I don't know if, um,
Well, I was looking for, uh, Ms., Dr. Myers-Doyle, so she, she can, yeah, she can answer that question, so Danielle, if you want to get that.
Okay.
I think it's in the ballpark.
Okay, okay, thank you. And then also on the slide that you have near-term recommendations. Near-term, does that mean that we might concede some of these in this legislative term? Or Richmond usually moves that are rather slow-paced, is near-term in the next four years, or what, what do you consider near-term?
So I think some of the initial out, coming out was three to four years, they've said two to three. I know the biggest push that you saw from some feedback from school divisions across the Commonwealth was the lifting of the support cap that occurred back when the recession happened. Um, I think that is still at the forefront of the General Assembly, and so we are hoping that that would be something they can push forward a little quicker. We, obviously, it would be pure speculation at this point, but we were hoping that some of that um, would have come through because then that would free up some of the funding we have where we have, we pay for those support positions because they're badly needed resources for our division, and that way that money can be used for other priorities.
Yeah, Ms. Weems, I could add to that if you, if you want me to add to that before you ask a follow-up. So, um, we were, the superintendents were addressed by, um, Secretary Gudera. And, uh, with regard to the first bullet on near-term, eliminate the sort, support cap, which limits the number of support positions the state would fund. Recall in two thousand eight, during the financial crisis, the, um, state was forced to reduce funding and some of that was in support positions. And since two thousand eight, those support positions have not been adjusted. And so the question came to Secretary Gudera related to the governor's budget. Would he be amenable to a conversation around addressing some of the most serious support cap positions that, that are across school divisions? The Secretary Gudera's response was, well, the governor's really pushed us to stop doing one-offs and really focus on creating a student-weighted funding formula. So he's actually appropriated a million dollars to put together a group to focus on student-weighted funding formula, which is going to take a couple of years. And just to get it developed, then it'll go through the process of trying to be approved. So at this point, I do know at the General Assembly, there are those who are going to press to get consideration for some of these support positions, which would then require the governor to take a look at some of the line items that he has to determine whether he'd be willing to reappropriate those in support of support positions. The challenge we have in Virginia Beach, we're our own worst enemy in that, um, as the governor has put money in education, he's also recognized different divisions have high needs and he wants to support those divisions. We don't have a leg to stand on high, on high needs because of our academic performance and the condition of our schools, et cetera. So I don't know how much we're, more we're gonna get, but I do know that the, the, uh, House, the Chair of the House Appropriations Committee and the Chair of the Senate Appropriations Committee um, is in support of, uh, asking their committee to go forward and see if they can do something with support cap.
Alright, thank you.
Hey, thank you so much for this presentation. Um, on slide twenty-three, the grant landscape, I know that there's been discussion about whether or not we're even gonna have a Department of Education. Should that disappear in this school year, is this then going to affect all of our grant landscape?
We think if that was to happen, it will likely take a while. I don't think it can be dismantled as quickly as, but it will impact the operating budget if we need to support those students based on that funding that we receive out of those main, um, grants that are listed.
And do we have any plan for that?
We, not at this time. What will happen will be similar to what, um, and you, and you weren't here, but when we had ESR funding from the pandemic. What, what has to happen is we have to start analyzing what we support with those funds and what we need to try to absorb within our operating budget and what that we can do without. So it is an anal, an analysis that will, that will have to be done on all of them, such as we did on ESR.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And now I welcome Mr. Delaney with the middle school master schedule.
Update.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you and Happy New Year and welcome to our new board members. Uh, good afternoon. Chairwoman Melnick, school board members, and Dr. Robertson. I'm Matt Delaney, I'm the Chief Schools Officer. Uh, Dr. Smith is gonna do the majority of this presentation as he is the Senior Executive Director of Middle Schools, but I just wanted to provide some context regarding this brief you're gonna receive on the middle school schedule. At the November eighth school board meeting, a presentation was provided on the new School Performance and Support Framework adopted by the Virginia Department of Education. At the conclusion of that presentation, you may remember that Dr. Robertson shared that based on this new framework, we would need to revisit our middle school scheduling model. Uh, just for additional context, the school board will receive an update, an updated presentation on the School Performance and Support Framework at the January twenty-eighth meeting, so stay tuned. The school board has also received several briefs on the Virginia Literacy Act, or the V-L-A. This year, the V-L-A has impacted our elementary school teachers and students the most. The impact shifts to our middle schools next year. Candidly, we're gonna need to find opportunities within the school schedule to address the supports required within the Virginia Literacy Act. Finally, and, and many of you that have been on the board for a while have, have seen this, um, we have concerns with the ability for some of our middle school students to maximize course offerings or opportunities as a result of our current scheduling model. For additional context, our middle schools have essentially been operating under the current scheduling model with minor variations since the nineteen nineties. So over the past several months, Dr. Smith has been working with principals and central support staff on developing a schedule that best serves our middle school students and staff. He has also met with over sixty middle school teachers to receive feedback, provide input, and respond to their questions. So you're going to receive a very high-level brief on that work today. It's really important to emphasize that the master schedule is more challenging to develop than what it may appear in a single presentation. For example, student score, score, um, course selection, as you heard from Ms. Pate today, staffing and SOQs drive much of what we do in the schedule. And then secondly, this is going to be a change. And as you know, with any change, it brings a level of stress to those that are impacted. So please know that this is the first in a series of presentations. Dr. Smith is our resident expert in middle school scheduling. He's gonna be prepared to answer questions today, but much like Ms. Pate, for members of the school board over the next several weeks, please send questions to Ms. Woodhouse and Dr. Smith, similar format to what you just heard. And he will bring back answers to the questions at our next meeting on his, as an information item with the hope of bringing this to action in February. So I just wanted to provide that context as he comes into a little bit of a deeper dive on a high-level brief. Dr. Smith?
Welcome, Dr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Delaney, and good evening, Chairwoman Melnick, Dr. Robertson, and members of the school board. As Mr. Delaney shared in his opening remarks, there is a need to revisit the middle school master schedule based on the new VDOE School Performance and Support Framework, the implementation of the Virginia Literacy Act, and to maximize opportunities for our students. In response, I am very excited and I am excited to present a middle school master schedule that addresses these needs. Forgot that I'm running a slideshow. The purpose of this presentation is to review components of our current schedule, share guiding questions that informed our decision-making, discuss action steps taken to date, outline recommendations, provide sample schedules, and to share next steps. But first, I want to begin by sharing components of our current schedule. Twelve of our fifteen middle schools operate on an A-day, A-day, B-day schedule for core classes. These classes meet every other day throughout the school year and range anywhere from one hundred to one hundred and twenty minutes, depending on the school. All of our middle schools operate on a bell schedule for elective classes. These classes meet every day and range from forty-seven minutes to fifty-five minutes, depending on the school. We currently have three schools that operate on a bell schedule for both core and elective classes. A core teacher's schedule consists of four classes and one academic support bell for a total of five. An elective teacher's schedule consists of five daily classes. A student course load consists of four core classes, which are math, English, science, and social studies, and two elective bells. There are some challenges with our current schedule. One is the lack of uniformity in our master schedule across our schools. Some schools operate on a block schedule, while other schools operate on a bell schedule. And the lengths of these classes vary from school to school. Another is the limited elective opportunities for our students receiving additional instructional support and services. I do want to share, however, that we do have two schools with unique schedules that different from, differ from that of our traditional schools. Plaza Middle School, which is a school-wide international baccalaureate school, and Old Donation School, which serves gifted students. At both schools, students receive three elective classes, and as a result, both schools will continue with their current schedule next school year. In collaboration with principals, the following guiding questions were developed before discussion potential schedule options. The first, the first question was, does our current master schedule allow us to maximize support for English language learners, students with disabilities, provide academic support, and for accelerated learners? Our second question was, does our current master schedule provide students the opportunity to maximize access to a To elective courses. And our third guiding question was, does our current master schedule allow us to maximize access? To higher level courses and opportunities to earn high school credits. After reviewing these questions, it became clear that while we do offer and provide opportunities. In some cases, we are limited. Therefore, we recognize the need to explore a new schedule. That provided more flexibility and opportunities for our students. I want to take a second to share our action steps taken to date. Using the guiding questions, a team of middle school principals began collaborating to design a schedule that I will present this evening. This group, as well as all middle school principals, routinely reviewed this work. And made suggestions and recommendations throughout the process. Key coordinators and directors from central administration have also been in part of this planning process. Information sessions were held with groups of middle school teachers to seek feedback. School-based teams consist of one teacher from each core content level, which was math. One English, one science, and one social studies teacher. One special education teacher and one elective teacher. Before walking you through the sample schedules, I want to identify recommended changes. The first change is to provide uniformity in master schedules across all middle schools. Schools will operate on a block schedule for core classes and a bell schedule for elective classes. Block classes will meet approximately ninety minutes. And our bell schedule, our bell classes will meet for approximately fifty minutes. We strongly feel that the uniformity in our schedule will be beneficial for students who transfer within our school division. Uniformity of schedule will also allow us to maximize scheduling opportunities. Better align our elective bells to maximize distant learning opportunities for world languages. And provide a consistent time of day for members of our Department of Teaching Learning to support middle school P L Cs. The second change, and this is why I'm so excited to present this, is the addition of Thrive Time. The purpose of Thrive Time is to provide more students access to a full elective schedule. To thrive in their interests and talents while also providing instructional support to meet the individual needs of our students. The importance of our elective programs cannot be overstated. As they allow students to discover and explore subjects outside the core curriculum. These classes help students identify their passion and potential for career interests. The implementation of Thrive Time will give us opportunities to provide S O L lab and academic support for students who need additional instruction. Provide support for students with disabilities in our English language learners. Provide school counselors time to engage students in advisory lessons and career and academic and career planning. And provide opportunities for small group pull-out support by leveraging our math, our literacy, and our gifted resource teachers. Some of these examples include working with students who require literacy support under the new Virginia Literacy Act. Working with gifted students on independent projects and providing additional services. And provide additional support and time for students to engage in rigorous advanced coursework. To process what they have learned and to practice these skills. It's important to note that while we have always provided additional instructional services. For some of our students, it has come at the cost of losing an elective class. Keeping our guiding questions in the forefront, consideration for student schedules included. Tiered support beyond the core classroom. Increased participation in elective classes and maximizing opportunities to earn high school credit. Over the next several slides, I will share examples of how the addition of Thrive Time will allow us more flexibility. In our schedule to address these instructional needs of, for our students. While allowing more opportunities to explore elective classes and earn high school credits. First, and I want to share that, orient you to the slide, that what is on the left of the slide is what we currently have as a schedule. To the right is the proposed schedule. First, let's look at an example schedule for a student who is placed in an S O L lab class. Under our current guidelines, any student who fails the spring S O L math or English test. Is removed from an elective class for the first nine weeks of the next school year in the fall. Under our proposed schedule, the student will receive additional academic support during Thrive Time. Which opens the door for this student to explore electives of their interest. Which in this scenario is Computer One and Computer Solutions Two. I want to go back to one of our guiding questions. We have provided the opportunity to maximize access to elective classes for this student. I would like to share another example of how Thrive Time benefits students who receive E S L services. In this scenario, the student would participate in health and physical education. And receive E S L services on alternating date. For example, this student would have health and physical education on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. And receive E S L services on Tuesday and Thursday. Under the proposed schedule, the student would receive E S L support during Thrive Time. And therefore would be, be able to fully participate in health and physical education. Let's look at a seventh grade sam- s- student sample schedule for a student with disabilities. Who receives academic concepts based on their individual education plan otherwise known as an I E P. Under our current schedule, this student would have academic concepts and for grown elective class for the entire year. The only elective class this student will receive is health and physical education, which is a required elective course. Under the proposed schedule, this student would participate in academic concepts during Thrive Time. And therefore have the, have a full complement of elective classes to select from. In this scenario, the student is taking digital inputs. And applications and desktop multimedia presentation. I want to point out that not only does the student receive their elective, but they also have the opportunity to earn high school credit. Of equal importance, this time would allow student case managers the opportunity to work with their students. On their I E P goals and to provide additional learning support. Again, I want to go back to one of our guiding questions. Which was to maximize opportunities for our students to earn high school credit. I think this example schedule clearly details that we've opened that door for this student. Now I want to break from script for one minute because this is my excitement. We currently have special education students who enter sixth grade. And go to seventh grade and go to eighth grade and only receive health and physical education. And that is it. So if we were in a board meeting for eight hours a day, a hundred and eighty days a year. And the only thing we got were health and P E and a lunch, that would be a long day. So for these students, I think this, this schedule is critical. And that it allows them the opportunity to explore their passion and interest. And in some cases, this is why some of these students will come to school. And we need to have that opportunity for these students. I'll go back off script. Sorry about that. Be- before reviewing this schedule, I want to first point out that on the schedule to the left. Let me go back an arrow. On the schedule to the left, you will notice that I have band slash health and P E listed. I want to explain that eight, health and physical education is a required elective course in eighth grade. However, a parent may submit an eighth grade health and physical education opt-out request form. Which would allow the student to take band. If this form is not completed, the student must forego band and take health and physical education. In some cases, we try to offer a zero bell to give that student a third elective. That depends on staffing and that depends on the willingness of a teacher to teach an extra bell. So I just wanted to point that out before moving forward. Now let's look at an eighth grade student who rece- re- received a grade below seventy percent in math for the second semester. Under the current schedule, this student would be removed from their band class. And placed in academic support for the second semester. If the grade improved above a seventy percent at the end of the third quarter, the student would be placed back in band. If the grade did not improve to above seventy percent, the student will remain in academic support. For the remainder of the second semester. In this scenario, the student, under this proposed schedule, the student will receive additional instructional support during Thrive Time. This gives the student full access to a year-long band elective. The student also has the opportunity to earn a high school credit by taking Spanish one. As demonstrated over the s- the last several slides. We continue to provide, we will continue to provide tiered support beyond the classroom. We have found opportunities for more students to fully participate in elective classes. And we have also maximized opportunities for students to earn high school credit. I'll go back off script. Earlier in the school year, we talked about band and we talked about our performing arts and the importance of it. We have found a solution to be able to allow access to our performing arts. And this is of a critical need that we want our students to have the opportunity to experience in our middle schools. Back on script. Before discussing in the considerations for teacher schedules, I want to note that you will only see a schedules. You'll only see schedules for core teachers. An example schedule for an elective teacher will not be shown as nothing will change with our elective teachers. Elected teachers will continue to teach five daily elective classes. Protecting P L Cs and daily planning time for our instructional staff was the highest of priorities among our principals. The purpose of professional learning communities is to foster collaboration among educators to improve teaching. And learning practices and enhance student learning outcomes. The second priority was to provide additional tiered support for students without taking planning time away from teachers. Now let's look at a potential, at two potential teacher schedules. While this example reflects a seventh grade English teacher. It represents what all core teacher schedules will look like for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. The only subtle difference will be the subject and the time of day that the teacher will teach and have their planning. In this example, block one. Block one, the teacher has planning on an A and B day. Block two, the teacher will teach English seven on an A, B day schedule throughout the school year. Bell three, the teacher will have a daily thirty-minute lunch. Block four, the teacher will teach English seven on an A, B day schedule throughout the school year. And bell five, the teacher will have a daily thrive bell. Looking at our section, second schedule, as previously mentioned. Thrive Time serves as an opportunities for students to receive additional instructional support. Whether the student remains in the thrive bell or is pulled out and receives support in another setting. It could result in fewer thrive bells needed. Therefore, teachers not assigned a daily thrive bell will teach one core class across grade level. Looking at this schedule, I will go with an A day schedule first and then we'll look at B day. On A day, block one, this teacher will teach English eight off grade level. Block two and four, the teacher will teach English seven. Bell three. Bell three, the teacher will have a thirty-minute lunch. And bell five, the teacher will have a daily planning bell. Looking at a B day schedule, block one, the teacher will have planning. Block two and four, the teacher will teach English seven. Bell three, the teacher will have a thirty-minute daily lunch. And bell five, the teacher will have a daily planning bell. In doing so, this ensures that middle school teachers continue to teach five classes. Which is the equivalent of what our middle school elective teachers teach and our colleagues at the high school level. I want to share that during the feedback session with teachers, they wanted assurances. That they would have the appropriate amount of planning time when teaching off grade level. This schedule does allow for that appropriate amount of planning time off grade, off uh grade level. As shared previously, our guiding questions helped us rethink and reimagine our master schedule. To the first question, does the proposed master schedule allow us to maximize our support for English language learners? Students with disabilities, students in need of academic support, and our accelerated learners. We strongly believe that the addition of Thrive Time continues to provide the tiered instructional support needed. To the second question, does the proposed master schedule provide students the opportunity to maximize access to our elective courses? We strongly believe that adding Thrive Time will allow more access to students to take elective courses. And to question three. Does the proposed master schedule allow us to maximize ask, access to high, high level? Courses and opportunities to earn high school credits. We strongly believe that Thrive Time will provide additional porch- supports for students enrolled in high school credited courses. Before concluding this presentation and taking any questions, I want to share our next steps. Ongoing collaboration between principals, school-based teams, and division departments will continue as we focus on components of Thrive Time. I know there's a lot of questions or there may be a lot of questions. And I know if you're seeing a master schedule for the first time and you haven't worked with the master schedule, rightfully so you would have questions. So as Mrs. Pate indicated, I would ask the same. If you have questions, please email Mrs. Woodhouse. Uh copy me and I'd be happy to bring those questions, answer those questions at our next board meeting. I will present this information again for information at the January twenty-eight School Board Meeting. And present for action at our February eleventh School Board Meeting. In conclusion, the excitement uh that I'm feeling right now. To be able to get through it without going off script. I have been a middle school person, I think since junior high, but uh been in middle school since two thousand. And this is the first schedule I've seen that I've truly said, this is it. Uh because along the way, there were schedules that I, I didn't see. That I appreciated. But the excitement to be able to offer the opportunity for students to have access to electives, earn high school credits. And get the support they need uh to me is very exciting. So I'll step off that soapbox and I'll open it for any questions that you might have.
Okay, Mr. Callan.
Well, Dr. Smith, I appreciate your enthusiasm and I don't want to do anything to diminish.
Well, Dr. Smith, I appreciate your enthusiasm and I don't want to do anything to diminish that. My question may be, if I use a baseball analogy, it may be the equivalent of handing you a sitting fastball. So with that, let me ask you this question. In light of all that you've presented and in light of the Department of Education's new emphasis on mastery and growth and the new assessment process that's being introduced to us. This is exciting because your enthusiasm is contagious and I appreciate that. My question is, do you see this leading and adding to an increased emphasis on mastery and growth from the student outcomes perspective? Because of all the things that we want to see happening in the school system in Virginia Beach, it's the academic outcomes that we are most interested in more than anything else. And we want to do all that we can to emphasize and increase that. Does this new enthusiastic schedule that you've presented lead to that outcome?
Yes, I strongly believe and feel that it does. Uh, the opportunity for Thrive Bell to provide those sessions, so what we're really doing is we're still providing the same supports. But we're doing it through a Thrive Bell that has been developed that then allows a student to have another elective. So do I think we'll continue to see growth and meet the outcomes and in the needs and of course accreditation? Yes, I strongly feel, I don't have a crystal ball, but I do strongly fe- feel that this schedule will lead to continued success. Did I answer your question?
It does. May the force be with you.
Thank you.
Miss Weems.
No frying pans, please.
Miss Weems.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Smith. Um, I love the fact that the classes are now a little bit shorter. We don't have two hundred minute classes, but oh, poor teacher, poor student. Um, so I love that. Um, how long is the Thrive Time? Is it a fifty-minute bell or ninety-minute bell, Thrive Time?
It's gonna be approximately fifty-five minutes.
Okay, okay, so about like an elective?
About the same time as an elective.
Now, to sign up for a Thrive Time, do you, do the students sign up for something and they're in there for nine weeks? Do they sign up for something on the computer by the day, by the week? How does that work?
So all students would be assigned a Thrive Bell.
Okay.
And then if I'm a students, a student with disabilities, instead of going to that Thrive Bell, I'll meet with my, uh, with a special education teacher and that's where I'll see my academic concepts. So I would actually.
Okay, so you're, you're assigned a Thrive Time and then from there, you, the student has the flexibility of what he or she needs.
Right.
Okay.
And it allows us to differentiate and identify the individual needs of students. So it allows us that flexibility to get them the services and supports they need.
Okay, okay, and um, with the PE, I know that it's not required, well, it's sort of required in eighth grade. But you can opt out. What percentage of students opt out of eighth grade PE, do you know? Like, are half of our kids taking PE in eighth grade, half not? Can?
I, I would say.
Does any eighth grader take PE?
Yes, oh yes. Yeah, we, we have a lot of eighth graders that take PE for a semester.
I've had conversations with someone in our, in our midst right now about PE and the, uh, during our mental health task force meeting that I went to last time, this, this came up about how important it is for, you know, just health and our concerns with obesity, our concerns with brain breaks and how important health and PE is. And of course, I think it's important because I teach it every day. Um, so we were just kind of, and we'll talk offline on this about how we can make sure that our eighth graders are also getting time to run around and instead of just signing up for another class that they're gonna be sitting in the whole time. So, so we'll, we'll talk about that because I would like to get the numbers of how many of our eighth graders are actually taking um, PE and, and how many are opting out. I love, so far, I know I'm gonna have some more questions, Dr. Smith, but I love your example about how when a child, say, just thrives in band or whatever they're elective and they just love it, that's why they get up every day and do well in school. Um, in order to keep doing that, that's their passion, that's their outlet. And you get to tell them, oh, you're gonna miss band so you can do something that you hate and you struggle with and that's really hard for you. So, um, that has always seemed very crucially unfair. So I'm super, I share your enthusiasm with that piece as well. Because um, I've had to tell a little granddaughter that, that she's gotta leave her fun stuff to go get tutoring, math tutoring. So um, and that's, yeah, so that is a huge problem that we've always had, so I really appreciate that part of it.
Yeah, it's been like a punishment, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's a punishment. You get to go from something you love to something that's really difficult and hard and that you don't like.
Felt like a punishment.
Yeah, yeah.
And you, you see the results and performances.
Oh, exactly.
Seeing core students sing before you, you, you go to different events throughout school division and you see how wonderful they are and how, how wonderful the, the teachers teach the classes.
Yeah, and, and if you, if you're a student that maybe struggles with school, but you have a reason to go there every day because you love that one class or that one that teacher, that, that goes a long way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Rogers. I am super excited about this schedule, but I do have a few questions. I am the parent of a middle school student. I have been a parent of a medical, middle school student for eight years now. So I am very familiar with the bell schedule and all of the electives. My first question is, um, you said that Plaza and ODS will stay on a three elective schedule that includes the um, one for HPE and then the two others. Is this new schedule going to sort of mirror what they're doing? Is that what we're doing or is it, they're totally different?
Good question. Uh, no, it would be different.
Okay.
Uh, the IB program and the uh, old donation school program require three electives.
Okay. Um, my next question, you probably don't have this information on you, but how many of our Plaza and ODS students um, are getting academic support during their one electives?
So they do run an academic support bell.
Okay, so is that on top of the three electives or during?
During. So there are situations, so with the back lawyer program and with old donation school, we have students uh, who take a foreign language in sixth grade. They take a foreign language one. And so a credit-bearing course. So we look for opportunities where we provide SOL support to their students. So that's the traditional, which you may have heard of, is the SOL lab.
Right.
They would still continue with providing support to their students.
So those students then required three electives, but if they need SOL lab, they would be taken from that elective to go to the SOL lab. Okay. I just wanted to make sure I was clear on that one. Um, I adore the opportunity for the students to have more um, electives. I think it's very important. Um, as some of my colleagues have already talked about, when you're a student who is already struggling in math, being taken out of a class that you want to do, to do a class that you already struggle in is torture for them. It really is. And um, I guess my biggest question is, I don't really understand why we are having students pulled out of electives at all and why they aren't pulled out of that class that they're struggling in to get the support during the class they need support in. And I don't know if that's something that we can, you know, maybe think about more. But if I'm struggling in English class and I'm in a bell and for fifty, a hundred twenty minutes, however long, I don't understand what's going on. We, I don't know why we're not pulling students out during that time to have more individual support for the thing they don't understand. And then this way, we are then telling our students who are struggling academically, there is no punishment. Everyone gets the two electives. And if we are all agreeing that not every student is going to go to college, some of those electives in middle school will be the opportunity for them to get the career that they need, to understand, hey, I'm a great, I don't know, welder, I'm a great shop person, I'm a great musician. And give them the confidence that they need. So that's really, um, I love the two electives, love it. And I also think it's really important that we aren't diminishing the importance of the elective education. It is education. The same as math, the same as English, the same as science. All of our electives are important, critical education. And putting that as just as high of an importance as all the rest of our four basic subjects, I think is crucial. So that would be, I guess, my only comment or question as to why we're not doing more to pull our students out of the um, uh, out of the core classes that they're struggling in during that time. Because I know we do that in elementary school and I understand we do that in high school. So I'm not sure why we're not doing that in middle school.
If you don't mind, Ms. Rogers, I'd like to take that one because it, it mirrors a little bit of Mr. Callen's question. And I, I appreciate both questions because this hopefully highlights for you the challenges that schools when developing a schedule must face. Because Mr. Callen asked a question about mastery and growth, which is under the support framework, which is basically our accreditation standards. And Dr. Smith didn't say this, but knowing Dr. Smith, that's where the rubber meets the road for our middle schools, is are we maintaining accreditation? That is the pressure that they feel on those ends. The framework does not address elective mastery. So keeping that on us, on an issue of what, where the rubber meets the road from the state is around mastery of math and English and science. And so the opportunities to pull those students out during that time, and in most cases, as staffing allows, they are with a content specialist of that end. So they should be with a math teacher as much as possible in that math academic concepts class. Pulling them out during class, the challenge there is now you are removing them from current content. And so the challenge that exhibits there is, yes, I'm providing you support on information that you have, you're falling behind on and you're also missing what's going on in the classroom. So I'm exacerbating that challenge to a degree. So that, where, where Dr. Smith is so excited is I think he's feeling like we're solving both of those issues to the best of our ability. But recognize the pressure our middle school principals have always felt is around accreditation. High schools feel it a little bit, but not nearly as much as our middle schools do and our elementary schools do because that is what ultimately is the thing we report out on, on a variety of levels. So Jim, I apologize for taking that from you, but I think that's the context you need to understand that when they're developing a schedule is the challenge there. Uh, because they have to make those difficult decisions and yes, a kid does not like to be pulled out of that end. But we also need to ensure they're reading at grade level and that they're understanding math concepts and that comes with other challenges that Jim and his team have solved. So, thank you, Dr. Smith.
And, and I totally appreciate the students needing to be pulled out. And again, I think my just biggest concern is our special education students, our ESL learners. If they're sitting in the class not understanding anything that's going on because they're struggling with reading, math, whatever, it seems a little counter, counterintuitive to make them sit through it only to be pulled out of something else that they could be excelling at. That's, you know. So I'm gonna go ahead and yield though.
Yes, being cognizant of the time, it's five twenty-two. Dr. Green.
Thank you, and mine is just basically um, a comment. Uh, I have done many master schedules, some with you, Dr. Smith and Mr. Jamison. And I'm sure our school counselors are very excited um, with upcoming season of course selection. Um, and I also want to add, I know you will ensure that our parents will understand the difference now between thrive and academic support, that this means your child will get to do electives, which is, I appreciate you creating opportunity, you and your team, Mr. Jamison, with our school counselors, uh, equity and access, which is very important, which we did not have um, before the Thrive Time. So thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Brown?
I'm actually gonna yield to Mr. Culpepper because of the time. Thank you.
I think I got a couple of questions here and I'll probably take most of them offline here, but I'll ask you one right now. Um, the, your, you know, the slides you've got that, that show that, that where Thrive fits into the schedule and makes it look like there was an extra hour in the day, is that the case? Are we extending the uh, the school day by an hour?
No.
Okay.
That, that'll be a fifty-five minute bell.
Okay.
Yep.
That's why I say I'll take this question offline. There's several things in here that, I don't, I don't quite understand how the teacher schedule and those schedules dovetail together. I'll just ask you about that later.
Okay.
Ms. Brown? It's, we still have time now?
Okay, so I, I appreciate your enthusiasm and your hard work on this. Um, and I, I would just wanna make sure it's not viewed as a criticism, but I'm curious that students that don't need academic support, um, that don't need SOL lab and um, ESL services and students um, that do not have disabilities, um, what will they do during Thrive Time?
So I am meeting with a group of principals at our middle school league meeting and we're gonna start to frame out Thrive Time and what it looks like. There are opportunities uh, for, for some students where we could do financial skills. Um, but we have not dug deep enough in terms of what are other opportunities outside that. But we do have students, like I said, they're advanced students who are engaged in advanced coursework that need that time. So I, I don't wanna say it's a study hall, it wouldn't be a study hall. But it will be time where students have access to a teacher who'll be able to walk them through problem solving.
Okay, so there, there's gonna be some opportunity to kind of make it what the students individually need it to be. Um, some students may need to, you know, work on that work extra. We might be able to use the time to teach them something new still. I, I just wanna make sure that, you know, we're trying to meet the needs of every single student and while all these groups are extremely important as well, I just wanna make sure that everybody's got um, opportunity during that. So thank you, I appreciate it.
Ms. Brown, there are two things real quick in that presentation that highlight your question. One is academic career planning. So how do school counselors utilize that time? And just another example is the gifted five-year plan, which discussed pullout services for gifted students. There's an opportunity for our gifted students to receive those services during that time. And we'll work with Dr. Smith as we're meeting with principals and others this week to provide Jim maybe a little more update on Thrive Time discussions with principals throughout the next month as we go through these presentations.
If I could add just one comment overall, um, what you, what you see here is really a schedule that represents maximum efficiency. As Dr. Smith talked about at the beginning, we had schools with block classes from a hundred to a hundred and twenty minutes, from, from forty-seven to fifty-five minutes. By becoming efficient with ninety-minute blocks, basically, and fifty-minute, fifty to fifty-five minute elective classes, we just found another forty-five to fifty minutes every day. That rather being a collection of s- uh, shark block or Lancer Bell or Raider Prep, it's now Thrive Time and it allows us to maximize opportunities for all the things we talked about. It's really if, an efficient schedule, the most efficient schedule I think they could have come up with based upon what we see in the three Es framework.
Ms. Dwyer.
So I'm not sure who the mastermind behind this was, but it sounds like a winner to me.
Thank you.
I was wondering, is there a model in place in another school similar to this? Were these ideas just kind of, you know, brainstorming and the collaboration of uh, the teachers, this, you know, the administration, the principals, was it?
Yeah, so I, I can't take all the credit. Uh, thank you for that though. It, it has been a collaborative effort. And it's been collaboration between our principals, the Department of Teaching and Learning, uh, teachers providing feedback and input and that'll continue to, to go on. We have had schools uh, that have a time that they've carved out in a day where students do have the ability and, you know, without calling out a school based on middle school has what they call Raider Prep. And they provided similar uh, supports. And so yes, we, we've looked at different models, uh, but it's been along the way. It's been hard for me because I've been trying to give my opinions. Uh, but it's been challenging and holding back and letting it evolve with the group and, and really the frontline people, which are the principals who are our instructional leaders, uh, the support staff from the Department of Teaching and Learning, uh, and even input from our teacher leaders. So I'll take the credit, but I won't.
Okay, and so I ask my colleagues again, um, if you have questions about anything that was presented tonight, if you could please copy the full board on your questions. Um, um, not just staff replying all to us. It'd be great if we could to know, know those questions also. We might be thinking the same ones and you might beat us to it and um, I appreciate that. So it is five twenty-nine. We are adjourned until six o'clock.